All right. We're gonna call this city council meeting to order, please. And should we take a roll call? I'll be sharing.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Here.
And note for record, councilmember Santangelo is absent. Councilmember Trembley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tennyson.
Here.
And Mayor Kilde.
Here. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. I'm gonna ask councillor if you would please announce the reasons why we're gonna go into closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items listed on closed session.
And note for record, councilmember Santangelo is absent. Councilmember Trembley.
Coalition matter. And we have another matter as anticipated litigation under government code section 549, 56.9.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. I'm gonna ask councillor if you would please announce the reasons why we're gonna go into closed session, please. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session.
And we'll be back at five o'clock, so we are gonna recess to our own session.
Coalition matter. And we have another matter as anticipated litigation under government code section 549, 56.9.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. I'm gonna ask councillor if you would please announce the reasons why we're gonna go into closed session, please. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. And we'll be back at five o'clock, so we are gonna recess to our own session.
Coalition matter. And we have another matter as anticipated litigation under government code section 549, 56.9.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. I'm gonna ask councillor if you would please announce the reasons why we're gonna go into closed session, please. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into closed session. And we'll be back at five o'clock, so we are gonna recess to our own session.
Coalition matter. And we have another matter as anticipated litigation under government code section 549, 56.
Well, I understand you like to do the ones when they're always like in for the heat. The other ones, no, get their.
Yeah, and people wanna have, and people that. They're in. From the.
Probably there.
Their messes out. And then they. Then they each does it.
No, we don't want. I never liked that.
That's where.
It was almost like a. They keep all their lives there. They don't think they'll fall. I mean, they might have a those. Those that stay in there. They're falling, they're on.
Yeah, but simple. I mean, it's really hard, right?
Yeah, so. But it's, it's sitting by seat. It's still, it's in the background, okay? It's still, the supporting public's gonna go. Down in that.
Yes. It's kind of. Yeah, yeah. I don't wanna do. Like, you know, it's like there's water leak and.
And dial. That. Not many. But there is, they can. Around that controller under the. Because, um, carry your stuff and.
Yeah, that is. That's a number one. Yeah. Um, but I did get a final. I see. It is. It's. Chief.
I was thinking you should get a student, but he wanted to be. Or I said, he, but this could be supposed to. He said, it's a trial.
Yeah.
Lots of how I.
So we got. So the, the issue that you'll see here there is important, but it'd be. Unworldly post, to the post your land, right? The, the immediate center of that. Yeah. My. Um, also, I want to add, um, but just, it's, right, because like.
Uh, I don't think I want to build a bridge up. Like, it's not, your science. I still want to. And if we can do that all. I don't. I'd rather not have them, if you said. Ground, so if it's.
Yeah, but given. And you're, you're from the one right now.
Doesn't sound like it's just a banking issue.
Yeah, it, it is, but yeah, the one that. The one that come home here than your period is a lot of her company. Um, it can do, uh, what. So if you want to.
It comes from that.
Position back. So like staff or need, like if you want to hire a staff, ready to have that happen, keep her up and then start the.
Arts already.
What is it?
First, there's some. I know they have some chew and they try to put on a council. I said, for a while, let's have a whole day or not. I don't know how much time. First, the.
Yeah.
I love it.
Especially not. Uh, maybe schedule. Like maybe tomorrow.
That's what I need to do, be a direct person, or invite the director instead of saying. Have a piece of page. That every time. I can read it sometimes. I'll write it up. Your odd one thing. There's like a two thirty. Avenue or.
Mark likes to. One, that's good. The, uh. It is gonna be nice.
So the one we have. Start with the first one would be the. Seventeen. Actually, I know. And then. Not sure what, originally I would like show, um, things that. I don't know what they're gonna do, but I know.
The question.
That's a separate one, but the month. Month. I think. Pretty much. I told, um, I mean, I'd like to have a second hour. Without me, we could take the workers and then we can at least do like the.
I think we're getting comfortable just getting there. I think it's a little bit.
He's pretty odd.
Yeah.
He'll make a one.
Yeah, but, uh, Marcy, she, she wanted.
Probably give more feedback, one that you can hear or write up for. That's what you're gonna express this concern. You had to go into works, it's already in. So. But we, he's more concerned about. Another layer complexity is that one agenda. But he's more concerned like how, when my.
Was told he has to.
Well, I love that. And then it's enough for you to know where that actually could receive location. Um, I don't know.
We should. If you have that, I'm sure. I was. That's case there is. You only have a five.
At least two following. Uh, three, but the higher one, we have four, that's our. One to give her a throw on. So, uh, I'm pretty boring. So. Sounds great. Maybe it's the way trying to work. And. But you have to have one job for the topic. I'm horrifying. Oh, reasonable.
I didn't. And they. And so then. It's like, oh, it's. Some of this is, I'm just gonna go like. But it is, it's supposed to be a pain, right? But I know that there are needs to a lot. I guess like. It's changing.
I don't think it's easier to, it's really hard for, uh, the.
Yeah.
And then I wouldn't. So what do you say, city? So if you have a lot of.
Beijing.
I'm a public and I don't know if this is gonna be, so I don't know. Well. It doesn't make sense, so it's. Not figure out what this college is.
You.
Uh, fourteen minutes. Huh? Yeah. And that includes a two-minute video.
I think I'm just like...
Nineteen ninety-six, California voters approved the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, also known as Proposition Two Eighteen, which established new requirements for setting local government fees and charges, including utility rates. Three key provisions of Proposition Two Eighteen include: One, funds collected from utility rates cannot exceed the cost of providing the service. We regularly study the total cost of providing water and sewer services, so we don't adopt rates that over or under-collect. Two, monies collected through rates cannot be used for any other purpose, such as to build a new library or fund public safety. Three, Proposition Two Eighteen requires that customers are charged fairly for the specific costs they, as a group, place on the system. Customers must pay their fair share and cannot be required to pay the costs incurred by another group. For example, residential customers can't be told to pay more, so commercial customers can pay less, or vice versa. Proposition Two Eighteen also requires that all property owners receive a mailed notice of planned rate adjustments.
...
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Director Kildee?
Here.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Here.
And let the record reflect Director Santangelo is absent. Secretary Tennyson?
Here.
And Chair Tremblay.
Here. Director Tennyson, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Place your hand up your heart, ready to begin.
All right, thank you. We have an approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. General public comments, this is a time for any members of the public who wish to offer comments to the Sanitary District Board of Directors for items that are not on the agenda. How's that for qualifying things? Is there anybody who wishes to approach the podium at this time? All right, hearing none, thank you. Consent calendar, do I hear a motion on consent?
I can move consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on items A, B, and C in total on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Director Kildee?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Tremblay.
Yes, let the record reflect that's adopted on a four zero vote. Are there any board member comments tonight to the Sanitary District Board? Are there any staff comments? We have kind of a pattern here. All right, we are going to recess to go to discussion item D, the rate study public outreach, and that'll be part of a discussion with the City Council.
Right, I'd like to reconvene the Camrio City Council meeting for March 12th to order once again. And let the rec reflect that all council members are present except one absent. Approval of the agendas, I believe it's approved and will go down to, we do have a presentation tonight, and it's a Red Cross month proclamation, so do you want to come on over here and we'll... Can anybody hear? All right, welcome, and I am going for the public, just state your name if you would, please.
Ken Bauer.
Eileen Hernandez.
Okay, Ken and Eileen, and Kevin, so we've got a trifecta going on here, don't we? It's my pleasure to proclaim this month American Red Cross Month. And a jeopardy question, who started the American Red Cross? Clara Barton. Okay, that's a jeopardy question. So it's an honor to be here and present this here on behalf of my colleagues on the council here. The Red Cross does so many good things that it would take all day to explain all the good that you do for the community. And I'm not going to read everything on the proclamation, but I am going to highlight just a couple of sentences, if you will. And these are ordinary individuals. And what they do, they make an extraordinary effort to help people when people need the most help. And it could be through wildfires, it could be through shelter, food. You comfort families when they're in need, life-saving blood, support military veterans, and so on and so forth. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that the American Red Cross does to the benefit of our community. And at the very least, we could present this proclamation from the mayor and my fellow colleagues here to proclaim that the month of March, American Red Cross Month. And from a personal standpoint, I want to thank both of you for all the efforts that you do. It does not go unnoticed, it's probably needed more now than ever. You know, your job description expands through the years. It doesn't lessen unfortunately or fortunately, however you want to look at it. So it's my pleasure to present this to you and keep up the good work. And we look forward to working with you as a city and as a council and as a county and a state for many, many years to come. So again, thank you very much. I'm going to ask both of you if you'd like to make a few comments before I present this to you.
I just would like to thank the entire city, the city council, and all of our volunteers who live within the county. We're a very large region, going from Ventura County all the way up to San Luis Obispo and Kern and Inyo and all those central Californias. So a lot of effort, a lot of volunteers. One message I always like to get out is whenever you visit a shelter, like we had at the Padre Sierra Church for the Camrio fires, 90% of the people there are all volunteers. We're both volunteers. We're in no pay. And the thing you can trust and you can check with Charity Navigator, 90% of every dollar donated goes to our services. Less than 10% goes to staff, so that's our big claim to fame. Now, a couple of punches. The Ride for the Red is coming up on April 26th, and we would love to have as many of you there as possible. Just visit our website and get it. And I just want to thank all the volunteers, we always need more volunteers, we always need more blood donations. Our Home Fire Campaign, where we install smoke alarms in people's homes, you know, when there's not a tragedy. So we can avoid a tragedy, but that's about it. I appreciate it.
I think you said it all, but if I can just add, I just want to thank you all for your continued support in what you do and for allowing us to be here today to receive this proclamation. And I hope we see some of you in our event in April, so thank you.
I'm going to ask my colleagues, anybody like to make any comments at this particular point? Ms. Martinez Bravo?
Sure. Thank you so much. I know that we're celebrating you today and this month, but the reality is that I know you do this work 24/7 and the entire year. And I'm extremely thankful, I did see firsthand your work during the mountain fire at Padre Sierra Parish. In addition, being in the nonprofit sector, I do coordinate with Diana quite frequently. And I'm just, you know, boots on the ground, doing the work and just serving the community. So thank you so much, I'm very, very appreciative of all of the work that your organization does.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor Tennyson?
I would just like to dittle what Councilmember Martinez Bravo said. And I had the opportunity in a previous life of interacting quite frequently with the Red Cross at two lock-and-cheat mudslides and multiple fires throughout Ventura County. And it sure made first responders' jobs a lot easier once the Red Cross was on site and set up their tents and started doing what they always do. So thank you for your volunteerism and thank you for helping make our community just a little bit safer.
There's a tradition on this council, no one has ever accused me of being long-winded, of course. But there is a tradition on this council that when other members just nail it, you just say ditto, like Councilmember Tennyson and Martinez Bravo did. So I'll just say ditto is well said by both of you and by you, Mayor Kildee. Thank you.
All right, so that gets us down to general public comments for non-agenda items. Anyone from the public like to make any comments at this particular point? Do we have any cards? I don't have any blue cards. All right, so that gets us down to council and staff comments and reports. So which council member would like to start off? We'll have Ms. Martinez Bravo start us off tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. February 26th, I attended the Finance and Investment Committee meetings with Mayor Kildee. February 27th, I attended the Housing Trust Fund Annual Meeting, which was, the title of it was... of it was impactful lending impacts lives. And February 27th, I attended the West Ventura County Business Alliance Lunch Series with, our city manager was one of the presenters. Thank you, Greg. I think you did a great job. And I also really wanted to thank the president of the Business Alliance, Andy Conley, for his leadership in taking this on. I've really seen such really great events, and I had really good feedback from this city manager's event as well. February 27th, I attended the Cal State University Strategic Planning Engagement Session Meeting via Zoom. February 28th, I attended the Affording a Dignified Life on the Central Coast of California Challenges and Opportunities Conference at Cal Lutheran University. And March 7th, I attended the West Ventura County Business Alliance 2025 Women Business Conference at CSUCI. March 9th, I attended the Crop Hunger Walk with many community members and other churches. March 10th, I attended the CS, oh, actually, March 10th, I was supposed to attend the CSUCI Site Authority Meeting, but a friend of mine passed away and I was at a funeral, but I will be watching the meeting on Zoom, and so I did want to report that. March 11th, I actually engaged in the Women in History Program through AAUW. I wanted to thank AAUW for just their continued work on this program. And what they do is they develop scripts for famous women or women who have made an impact in our world and our country. And this year, I was able to present or portray Gloria Stefan, who is a Cuban-American singer and composer and humanitarian. It was a lot of fun. I think if we're ever having a sad or bad day, just go to a local school. Kids are so in the moment, and I absolutely loved it. And I know this is our last meeting at the Camrio Library for now that I'm aware of, and we will be meeting in our new council chambers at the next meeting. And so I really wanted to extend my gratitude to all staff members, because I know how much work went into bringing the council meetings here. And I especially wanted to thank those staff members who went above and beyond, especially with the technology, which can be so cumbersome at times. But I did want to thank Mr. John Thomas and Mr. Tom Magdaleno, Connie Johnson, our city clerk, Carrie Wheel, and Sylvia Hawkes as well. Thank you so much to everyone. And lastly, I would like to request that we, as a full council, please adjourn and honor firefighter engineer Tommy James Daniel Mendeo, who tragically passed away at the age of 32. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you want to? Sure.
On February 27th, I also attended the West Ventura County Business Alliance City Managers Series. And to echo Councilmember Martinez Bravo, our city manager did an excellent job and portrayed Camrio in a great light, answering questions from the moderator and I believe a couple of questions that were written from audience members. I think it was very informative. And I liked seeing two different city managers from neighboring cities, and I'm proud to be a Camrioian. On March 6th, I attended the RDP General Membership Meeting in Ventura. And I think we have a slide for my next one here. On March 6th, in the evening, I had the great privilege of representing Camrio City Council at the Scouting Double Eagle Court of Honor. And I know we have an expert on scouting here, the dius with Mr. Tremblay. But this was a unique opportunity for me to recognize two young ladies that became Eagle Scouts. And I believe there's only half a dozen, less than 10, young ladies that are Eagle Scouts in our area. And until just a few years ago, young ladies could participate in scouting. They could become law enforcement explorers. They could, but this was a firefighting explorers and things like that. But they were prohibited from pursuing the great honor of acquiring their Eagle Scout badge. These two young ladies were extremely impressive. Olivia Boyd, who is standing next to Chief Tennyson in that picture, and Claire Erickson, who is standing next to me, they clearly have a tremendous support surrounding them. Both sets of parents were there and many other adults that helped them on this journey. They've both been scouts since they were little girls. Olivia still looks pretty little next to the police chief. But the journey to become an Eagle Scout takes four to six years. So it shows tremendous dedication, commitment, overcoming adversity. Claire had a project at a garden up off of Highway 33 in Canyada Larga at a community garden that is used by young students, grade school kids, to learn the importance of growing your own food and how to sustain a garden and things like that. Her project was to build a shade structure out there for them. Olivia designed and built a zen garden at Rancho Campana, if I'm not mistaken, so that students had a nice, quiet, peaceful place to go. And I was happy to be there with Chief Erickson and Senior Deputy Havalka, who has a personal relationship with one of the parents that he works with through Project Hope. And I said that evening, and I'll say again, for those of us in the twilight of our years, rest easy. These two young ladies have shown tremendous leadership, and our future is in good hands as long as we have young ladies like this coming up in the future generations. So congratulations, Olivia and Claire, on acquiring your Eagle Scout and their nice new scarves. Is that what they're called, Mr. Tremblay? Are they scarves? They got their blue eagle scarves. And it was just a fantastic event, and I'm glad that the mayor was busy and handed it off to me. So thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In terms of meetings attended since February 26th, on February 27th, I had a meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Authority Fiscal Committee. On February 28th, I had a meeting of the MetroLink Board of Directors in Los Angeles. On March 6th, I pinch hit for Councilmember Santangelo at Clean Power Alliance. And that was a lot of fun, kind of a walk down memory lane. And I give a lot of kudos to what Clean Power Alliance has done and what our council member Susan Santangelo, who isn't here to defend herself tonight, darn it, she's away, but I give great credit to what Susan's been doing on Clean Power Alliance. It's been a lot of work. On March 7th, meeting of the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Lots of ditto's tonight, you may not be aware. So for example, in addition to our city council meeting here for all these months, there have been a number of other public bodies that have met here, including the Ventura County Transportation Commission and other bodies. And our facilities staff, and you've already named everybody, Martina, and thank you, have done a wonderful job together with Mr. Cameron, with Mr. Cameron. I really want to thank you. I spoke at some length about that at the last meeting, so I don't want to wear out my welcome, but ditto on that. Ditto on, I think it's very appropriate to adjourn in the memory of that Ventura County Fire Department Engineer. And certainly ditto for the vice mayor's comments on our new Eagle Scouts, Olivia Boyd and Claire Erickson, and congratulations to them. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll start with, I did have a Finance and Investment Committee meeting that's already been talked about with Ms. Martinez Bravo on the 26th. I did attend on the 27th the Business Alliance with our city manager, Mr. Ramirez there. That was a lot of fun to sit in on that. I did attend March 6th. We had a VRSD meeting. I attended that as well. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Tennyson, did a great job at the Eagle Scout presentation. Thank you for doing that. Let's see, the Women in History, thank you, Ms. Martinez Bravo, for attending that. You do a great job with that, among a lot of other things. I want to thank Mr. Tremblay too for all that he did during the past two weeks that we haven't had a meeting here. And just for the public, you know, our council members work really hard after hours on that, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And staff as well. I do want to thank the staff for all the work that they've done for this venue. We've been here for quite a while. I know it was a lot of work. I may be the only one. I'm going to kind of miss being here, though. We've got bigger and better things ahead of us, but this exceeded my expectations about how we were able to make this work. Yes, and so I'm very honored to adjourn in the memory, and we'll have more to talk about it later on, about Fire Engineer Mendaneo and Marsha Livingston Donlan. So we'll have more to talk about that as the agenda kind of comes before us. So are there any other council or staff comments at this particular point? Okay, so hearing none, we'll go down to the consent calendar item, please.
I can second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Would you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildy?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously with one absence. Okay, so that's going to get us down to item F. That's a discussion item, and it's a 2024-25 Water and Sewer Rate Preliminary Results and Public Outreach Plan. Okay, so we are going to have a staff member. I believe Pam is going to do that with us tonight. Thank you so much. We'll give you a little bit of time to set up here.
As Pam's getting ready, just a few introductory comments. This is an informational item. There will be no actions taken on rates tonight. This is a continuation of updates to the rate-setting process for water rates and sewer rates that has been a process going on for the last several months. It's a coordinated effort between the Finance Department, the Public Works Department, and the City Manager's Office. And at the next meeting on March 26th, we will be bringing forth to the council and to the sanitary board, a recommendation to begin the Proposition 218 process, which begins the 45-day public participation process, which ends in May with the public hearing, at which time the rates will be up for consideration for taking action. Thank you. So with that, Pam Townsend, our Assistant Finance Director, will present an update.
Thank you, and thank you, my friend, the city council, as dated. My name is Pam Townsend. I am the Assistant Finance Director here. It is my absolute pleasure to be with you again to discuss the FY 2024-25 Water and Sewer Rate Process, the results, and our public outreach plan. So let's dive on in. First things first on the agenda, we're going to give you an update on the timeline and where we stand. We'll review the history and what we went over at the last council meeting. We will show you how that's going to impact a typical customer's bill, and more importantly, we're going to talk about our public engagement plan. So first, we kicked this off back in the fall. That was our financial plan update and staff review. Since then, we have had five utilities committee meetings from November to February. Then, two weeks ago, we had our first city council meeting. And that brings us to today, our second city council meeting. Looking ahead, we have one more city council meeting. That's where we're going to come back to you and ask you to authorize that 218 notice. We're going to go into a little more detail in just a bit about what that is. On March 28th, we're going to physically mail those 218 notices to our customers. Between April 8th and April 26th, we have two different informational open houses. We're going to go into a bit more detail about what that means in just a minute. May 14th, we will be back, asking you to have the public hearing. On May 28th, we will have the second reading of that ordinance, and all of this is looking towards July 1 as the effective date for the new rates. So a review of the history. Last time we were here, we talked about some of the cost factors that were impacting the water side of things. The first was the rising operational costs. We talked about purchased water and electricity and chemicals. We also noted that we had some reduced water demand that was affecting our revenue side. We also talked about some capital costs and capital projects that were coming up and our dwindling cash reserves and how that was impacting our rates. On the Sandy side, totally different story. There, we talked about our large anticipated capital projects, and those were the generational investment in our infrastructure. Those were the ones that are going to be affecting us, our children, our children's children, for decades to come. We also noted that there were some changes in rising operational costs on the Sandy side, but that this was less impactful for those rate increases. And so what does that mean for the typical customer? Those were the ones that are going to be affecting us, our children, our children's children for decades to come. We also noted that there were some changes in rising operational costs on the Sandy side, but that this was less impactful for those rate increases. So what does that mean for typical customer? I'm using the word unit. Well, last year, we had, that means that the typical customer would see an increase of about $14.90. That's the equivalent of about 704 gallons of water. But that's a mouthful, so I'm just going to say unit to make it a little bit easier on us. So the proposed four-year schedule for an average customer, now remember, water has two different components to it. It has the meter service. This is a fixed cost. So no matter how much water you use, this is what you're going to be charged depending on your meter size. So a typical standard single-family home will be in a three-quarter inch wheel size. I should also note that the full tables are included in your agenda packet. We're not going to go to each and every one, although we can if you like. We do have those included as a backup side charge. But for purposes of this, we were just going to look for a single family home. And then it has a commodity rate. So then it actually charges based off of the full tables. It's broken down into tiers. Where tier one is, it uses zero and nine, including the black water. Tier two is between 10 and 15, and tier three is anything over 16. So I just highlighted in gold, this is our current state of affairs, which is what the current rates are. And we are proposing, we're tier one here, we also have the next four years shown here because we are proposing a four-year rate study. And how does that break down? How does that actually affect the cost? So I just highlighted in gold, well, again, typical single-family home, the twelve feet feet up, which you have your fixed charge of $32.30. Also have the next four. You have nine units of variable tier one. Remember, the first nine units are going to be tier one at $3.30. You have variable tier two. And again, we're saying 12 units in total, so we're going to need three units of that variable tier two, for a total of $76.80. Compare that to the variable tier one, remember, that would be the variable tier one at $3.30. And you have variable tier two. These rates were adopted back in 2023. We are not proposing any changes to the drought surcharges at all. I only want to bring them up because they are still available to us. To activate a drought surcharge, we would have to come back to city council. We would have to acknowledge that a drought condition exists. We would also have to identify the severity of that drought. So these are not impacting the rates that we are discussing today, but we just wanted to remind you that they do exist. And as a reminder, just looking at them, again, you can see our tiers across the top, tier one, tier two, tier three. The proposed base rate, those are the base rates that we just showed in our last commodity table. And the level 1, 2, 3, 4, that indicates the severity of a drought that would be decided by future council. And these are what those surcharges would be in addition to the proposed base rate. Again, we are not requesting any changes to these. We just wanted to highlight it so that they were highlighted. Next, moving on to sewer. Last time we were here, we showed you that we expect the typical average household to see an increase of about $11.89 on their monthly bill. And on sewer, it's a little bit easier as far as the math is concerned because it is a set standard rate. So single-family residential properties will go from 74.30 to 86.19. That's where you get that $11. So what does that mean for the average water and sewer customer? Now their bill would look about $163. Compare that to their last bill or their current bill, that would be $136. That's an increase of approximately $26.79. And we did want to acknowledge that that is a sizable increase. We know that that is a sizable increase, but to put that into context, we wanted to remind you the combined bill comparison of some of our neighbors. Right now, the one that you see on the left, the third one in, that's Camrio City's current position. We're very near the bottom. Even with these proposals, this would put us right around the middle. And we also wanted to highlight that all five of the agencies that were just highlighted in yellow are in the middle of either a water rate study, a sewer rate study, or both. So they could potentially see some movement in their rate. So they could potentially see some movement in their rates as well. So let's talk about public engagement, because we've not really had an opportunity to do that. And we wanted to make sure that the most important thing that we're doing is supporting transparent public outreach. We recognize that the rates that we discuss here are going to impact quite a few people. And we want to make sure that we are making ourselves available so that if the community or customers have any questions, that we are able to respond. And we're doing that with a wide approach, using a number of touchpoints. The first is in-person engagement. So we have two informational open houses. Those are the ones on April 8th and April 26th. We had five utility committee meetings. We have city council meetings and the public hearing that are coming up. All of those, of course, are open to the public. We are also building in-person field handouts. So when our staff members are out in the field, should the community have any questions, they would be able to easily hand these out with a QR code or a city access to our city's website so that they can take a look at what we have available to them on there. On the print side of things, we have a save-the-date postcard. So this is a postcard that's going out in the next seven days to all customers. It's going to remind them and let them know that we have these informational open houses coming and how they can get more information about them. We also have the Prop 218 public notices. Those are going to be in both English and Spanish, being sent out to all customers. We also have the utility bill messages. So when you get your utility bill, there is going to be a notice reminding folks that the rates are going to change. We have some other media options as well, things like news releases and op-eds. And on the electronic side, we've got a dedicated webpage with FAQs. We have explainer videos. We're about to watch one in just a minute. We have those in both English and Spanish. We have the City Scene Newsletter. We have City E-News. We have social media. And we've got a phone line and email. And with that, I would love to show you one of the videos that we've put together that will be available to the public.
The city of Camarillo is working to ensure that the rates you pay for water and sewer services are fair, equitable, and based on the actual costs of providing these services. So how are city utility rates set? California law determines how cities like ours charge for these services. In 1996, California voters approved the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, also known as Proposition 218, which established new requirements for setting local government fees and charges, including utility rates. Three key provisions of Proposition 218 include: One, funds collected from utility rates cannot exceed the cost of providing the service. We regularly study the total cost of providing water and sewer services, so we don't adopt rates that over or under-collect. Two, monies collected through rates cannot be used for any other purpose, such as to build a new library or fund a public safety. Three, Proposition 218 requires that customers are charged fairly for the specific costs they, as a group, place on the system. Customers must pay their fair share and cannot be required to pay the costs incurred by another group. For example, residential customers can't be told to pay more, so commercial customers can pay less, or vice versa. Proposition 218 also requires that all property owners receive a mail notice of planned rate adjustments 45 days before a mandatory public hearing. Further, Proposition 218 prescribes a way for customers to register their opposition to proposed utility rate changes. Any new rates that the Camarillo City Council adopts will be aligned with this legal framework, and utility rates will be fair, equitable, and based on the actual costs of providing services to all customers and customer types. To learn more about your water and sewer rates, the rate-setting process, and how we're investing rate revenues in our critical infrastructure, visit our website at cityofcamarillo.org/utilityrates.
So that is just one video. We will have multiple videos. This is the very basic, high-level video explaining the rate process. This is available in both English and Spanish and is currently on the website. Next, we want to talk about the information sessions that we have planned. The first is April 8th. That's right here at the Camarillo Library. It's on a Tuesday evening. We also have one scheduled for April 26th. That is a Saturday at Council Chambers at City Hall. That is in the morning. And both are available so that we can have an open discussion. Experts will be there, staff will be there. Should the public have any questions, concerns, we are happy to discuss them. The next is the Prop 218 notices. This is a 45-day mailed notice of the proposed rates. It's actually a requirement that we have to do in order to raise the rates. It really begins the public participation process. This will be bilingual as well. This is in both English and Spanish. And this is what we're going to be asking council to authorize the next time we see you on March 26th. One thing that I do want to highlight, before we authorize those 218 notices and before we get those all mailed out, we will have a bill calculator available on the city's website at cityofcamarillo.org/utilityrates. This will help customers, based off of their customer type, meter size, water usage, they will be able to estimate what their new bill will be with the proposed rates. And with that, we wanted council to provide feedback in any further direction to staff.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Anybody have any, excuse me, comments or additions or anything we didn't do that we may consider? Ms. Martinez Bravo?
Thank you so much, Pam. A great presentation. I really liked the video. I like the visuals. And I know you mentioned that that was going to be in Spanish as well. That's already on our website.
I believe it's already on the website. It's already on the website.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, great. Thank you. And then a follow-up to that is for the community engagement sessions. Will we have an interpreter to help with that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, perfect.
Come on up. This is Peter.
Peter Castles, Community Relations Officer for the City of Camarillo.
I didn't hear the answer was that we will have an.
Yes, so we've already enlisted support to have interpretive services at the, not only the two open houses, but also the hearing.
Okay, wonderful. And then last question for the calculator piece of it. So are people going to have to look at their bill or punch in their address, or how will that work?
There would be some estimates that they would have to input, so they would have to estimate their usage in order to estimate that bill. The best way to do that would probably be to take a look at past usage from their past bill. But that, that will be available. They could play with it if they'd like to see, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, based off of their own usage.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments or anything else on this? Compliment? Okay, would you like to, yeah, why don't you go ahead and?
Yes, I want to, I want to compliment staff and Raff Tellis, particularly in terms of the outreach. In fact, Pam, could you put back the slide just showing the extent of the outreach? We had five utilities committee meetings. And we discussed, obviously, we discussed the rates and the methodology, et cetera, at length. But we also discussed the public outreach. And I think this is the most robust public outreach that I've seen. This is not an easy message to give. And it's a, and it's, it's difficult, and nobody wants to raise rates. But yeah, but you know, there's a responsibility in doing so and in proposing that. And there's a great responsibility in engaging the community and providing the information necessary for people to understand it. So I really want to compliment staff and Raff Tellis on the engagement piece of this. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Staff would like to thank the committee members because they were instrumental in getting this outreach plan to where it is today.
Thank you. Yes, I'll just echo and ditto what my colleagues up here have said. And from a personal point of view, I will be paying these rates as well. And it's never easy to raise rates, but hopefully, it's a very thoughtful process that Councilmember Trembley has laid out so eloquently. And Councilmember Martinez Bravo, the Vice Mayor as well, that we've worked very hard on this. And what we've always tried to do, and what I've always tried to remind our residents that we try to stay in the middle of our rates. We try not to be too expensive or not expensive enough. We've always tried to keep our rates somewhere in the middle, and that was one of the goals that we have. But we're very cognizant that this is a burden, and we do not take it lightly. But as Councilmember Trembley stated, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have a very functional and viable system for, for years to come. So staff, do you need anything else from us before we move on? Have we, have we given you enough direction here?
I have everything I need so far. As, is there anything that you would need from us before we come back to you on March 26th and asking you to authorize the 218? Do you feel like you have enough information from us?
I personally can't think of any. I'll ask my colleagues if they're comfortable with this. No, I think we're.
Yeah, I think we have all the information that's needed.
Great, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, so any other comments? Okay, so move on. Do you want to?
Ern, the Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting.
All right, so that gets us down to item G. It's, this is a public hearing and it's proposed substantial amendments to FY 24-25 and FY 2021 CDBG Annual Action Reports. I think Erin is going to take that. Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Erin Lay. I work with Veronica Tam and Associates. We're a consulting firm that assists the city with the management of their Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program. The item before you tonight is an amendment, as you said, to the 2024-2025 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan related to that year's annual entitlement funding and an amendment to the 2020-2021 CDBG Annual Action Plan related to the special coronavirus funding, which was passed by Congress through the CARES Act in 2020. These action plans were approved by the city council and submitted to HUD. However, occasionally, after submission of an action plan, the needs of the community may change, planned projects may prove to be more costly than initially anticipated and require additional funding, or a project may otherwise be infeasible based on other factors. HUD allows for amendments to action plans as needed to best serve the community. The 2024-2025 Action Plan Amendment includes transferring affordable housing acquisition project funding to the transitional home acquisition project and adding 600, sorry, $64,981.92 in newly identified prior-year savings to the transitional homes acquisition project. The 2021 Action Plan Amendment includes the relocation, reallocation of unused funds to a new contract with the Society of St. Vincent de Paul for emergency rent and utility assistance for families who continue to be impacted by the effects of the pandemic. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Any council members have any questions at this particular time? Okay, no questions. So what's the will of the council? Oh, excuse me, this is an advertised public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anybody wants to make any comments on this particular item. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'll ask for a recommendation of the council at this time.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
I can second.
I heard a motion and a second by Martinez Bravo. Would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Trembley?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kilday?
Yes. That passes for one with one absence. Okay, so I'm going to get down. Is there anything with the closed session that we need to report out of closed session? I know we have one more item, I believe.
Yes, I'll just indicate that we did cover the first matter on the OPV litigation, but we'll be returning to closed session to handle the second matter. But there was no reportable action.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to get down again. Is there any here that want to make a general public comment? This is a time to do that. Or do you want to say anything, make a public comment? We do have one blue card. Hang on here. I'm sorry. What was your first, I'm sorry. Okay, would you like to proceed up to the? There's, I believe the microphones turned on. Yeah, and could you, could you? Right, could you limit your comments to three minutes? We'd appreciate it. Thank you. Let's see, please. Thank you.
So can you remind me? So one's on law enforcement, and what was the other one?
Well, let's see.
You can't read it.
Sorry, read the law enforcement.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so we'll stick with that one.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, law enforcement. I wanted to put Camarillo on the map for food and nutrition, for law enforcement, because nutrition and food nutrition is important for law enforcement. We don't only need their brahm, but we also need their, their physical aspects, too. So my three minutes is up. I love you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else in the public like to make any public comments at this particular point? Okay, seeing no one come forward. We are going to adjourn the memory of two people. One's Marsha Donlin, the other one's Tommy Mendineo. And I'm going to start with Marsha, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Marsha. And I believe some other council members might want to make some comments on both. And we'll start with Marsha Livingston Donlin. And I'll talk a little bit more about the Livingston part of Marsha. But Marsha passed away at the glorious age of 91. And in the picture, what you see is what you, you get from Marsha. She was probably one of the most kindest and personal and kind of up people that I ever met. I've known Marsha for probably 40 years. And she was a wonderful, wonderful member of a pioneer family, the Donlin family. And she actually lived in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. But she shopped in Camarillo. And in the twilight of her life, she actually moved to Camarillo, too. And Marsha was a, a big supporter of the city of Camarillo. And she loved Camarillo. And every time she would come in the store, she was very curious about what was going on in our city and had nothing but great things to say about the current council, previous councils, residents and staff members of our city here. And I just want to read a little bit about Marsha and the type of person that she was and is still. And Marsha was adored by her family, who were, miss her beyond measure. They were ever, ever cherish the family she created, her spunk, laughter, competitive spirit, and her endless talent for hosting gatherings and holidays and hilarious stories about growing up about growing, growing up in, in Oxnard and Ventura County, when it was far different type of county than we have today. Marsha's grandfather was Dr. William R. Livingston. Now, we all may be familiar with Livingston. They do a great job at the end of life. Many of us have used Livingston and are very familiar with what they, they do. And that was Marsha's grandfather, who was named in, in honor of Livingston Memorial. So without further ado, I just want to express my condolences to her family. And we're all going to miss Marsha, but she had a life well-lived. And as they say in Somus, which my mother was born and raised in, "Marsha, you done good." I'm going to ask anyone else that has any other comments on that. Okay, so with that, we're going to also adjourn in the memory of firefighter Tommy James Daniel Menadeo. And Tommy was thirty-two-year-old Ventura County fire engineer, and he's got a bio here. I won't read all of it, but he served with the fire department for almost ten years and was a resident of Ventura. And I don't know how old you're supposed to be when you die, but I do know this, that thirty-two is far too young. So it's an unfortunate situation here, but the city council would like to adjourn this meeting in his honor. And I'm going to ask any other council members if they'd like to add anything to this. Ms. Martinez Bravo, would you like to?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I was so saddened when I heard these news, and this is truly the least that we can do to honor this brave man. I'm going to go ahead and read the message that was put out by the Ventura County Fire Department, which speaks a little bit more about his life. "With deep sorrow, the Ventura County Fire Department announces the line-of-duty death of engineer Thomas Tommy James Daniel Menadeo at the age of thirty-two. Engineer Menadeo dedicated his life to serving and protecting the community with unwavering commitment, professionalism, and heart. His bravery, dedication, and kindness left an indebted mark on those he worked alongside and the countless lives he touched. Menadeo joined the Ventura County Fire Department as a fire control worker in 2015. In 2017, he was hired as a firefighter, graduating from Academy 54. He was assigned to Truck 54 in Camarillo, Station 26 in Santa Paula, Station 31 in Thousand Oaks, Station 51 in El Rio, Station 55 in Camarillo, and Station 53 in Port Wayneimi. Tommy promoted to engineer in 2022 and served his final assignment at Station 45 in Simi Valley. Tommy unfortunately was diagnosed with job-related cancer last October, and he had been undergoing treatment. In quotes, 'Tommy was part of our fire family for nearly ten years, standing shoulder-to-shoulder with us in response to our community's public safety needs,' said Fire Chief Dustin Gardner. We now, we now stand with Tommy's family in grieving his passing and supporting each other. In addition, there was a message that was sent from the PIO's office, and it talks about structural fires and the hazardous material incidents and other emergencies expose firefighters to numerous chemicals and toxins that significantly increase their risk of job-related illnesses compared to other jobs. In quotes, 'Firefighters work in a dangerous profession. We know the risks, and we go anyway because we share a commitment to protect our community,' said Chief Gardner. That doesn't make it easier when you lose a good firefighter, family member, and good human being like Tommy Menadeo." And with that, I just wanted to send my deepest condolences to the entire family, to his colleagues and everyone at the Ventura County Fire Department. And my love and my prayers truly go out to every single one of them, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Well, well said. Okay, so now we do have one other closed-session item. Will there be any announcements after that closed-session item, do you think?
I, I don't envision that, but I would, I'll communicate with the city clerk anything necessary.
Would you recommend that we keep this meeting open until?
Well, yeah, we can just recess into closed session.
Okay. So with that, I just want to, we're going to adjourn again in the memory of Marsha Donlin and Tommy Menadeo. And another announcement, our next meeting is going to be at the new Camarillo City Hall Council Chambers. I was able to see the chambers today, and they're very beautiful. So the next meeting will not be here, it's going to be at our new city council, new, newly remodeled city council is probably what it. We're going to go to recess and finish up our last closed item. So at this particular point, we're in recess.